Welcome to the Durango City Council Regular Meeting, virtual and in person, July 6th. It's now 6:40, and we'll start our meeting with a call to order. May we have a roll call, please, Ms. Phillips?
Councilor Bostman.
Present.
Councilor Buell.
Here.
Councilor Yussa. Mayor Baxter and Roseworthy. Mayor Beck.
Present.
Councilor Bostman, could you say something? I want certain, you're allowed members to hear.
I'm present, ready to be part of this meeting. Did that come across right?
Is there any turn that up? Let's try.
You guys come across a little crackly as well.
There you go. Thank you. All right. Excellent. Do we have any actual or perceived conflicts of interest? Councilor Bostman, any perceived or actual conflicts of interest? No, thank you very much. We'll move on to public participation then. This section of the agenda is satisfied with public comments. We ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for hearing or public testimony or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City Council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address some comments directly to the City Council. And we will have a timer, I believe, up on our screen. And you have three minutes for public comment. Didn't have any public comment? Yes, why not? Which, this Spanish interpretation on the DDoB? So is she typing it in and it's not showing up? Tom, is that the Spanish interpretation on GAV is not working?
Sorry, Mayor, I'm getting a bad connection here. So after the public participation, I thought we would have Diana from the Translation Service kind of explain the process. And so we all know what to expect. If you want, we could go ahead and have her do that right now, if that's appropriate.
That would be wonderful.
Okay, I can go ahead and do that. Hola a todos. Mi nombre es Diana y estoy aquí con mi colega Yitzel por parte de la cooperativa de Community Language, porque los organizadores de este evento se han comprometido a la justicia del lenguaje para poder crear un espacio seguro donde todos pueden participar y escuchar en el idioma de su corazón usando interpretación simultánea. En un momento podrán ver un icono de un mundo con tres opciones en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Por favor, haga clic en el mundo y seleccione el idioma en el que guste escuchar y hablar. Por favor, recuerde hablar en una velocidad conversional al presentar para poder proporcionar una interpretación adecuada. Gracias. Hello, everyone. My name is Diana and I am here with my colleague Yitzel from the Community Language Co-op because the organizers of this event have made a commitment to language justice to be able to create a safe space where everyone can participate and listen in the language of their heart by providing simultaneous interpretation. Here in just one moment, you will be, when interpretation is turned on, you will be able to see a globe icon with three options at the bottom part of your screen. So please select the language you will be speaking in and listening by clicking on that globe icon. You will be in that channel that you select. So you will be hearing the interpretation in Spanish if you select Spanish just by clicking on that. Remember to speak at a conversational pace when presenting in order to provide adequate interpretation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom, shall we begin? Is that okay?
Sorry, I'm gonna turn on the interpretation right now.
Okay, so do we have any public participation tonight? All right, I didn't see any. Thank you. And we do have a proclamation. It's disability pride month, and Kelsey Bellows is receiving it. We're gonna come down to the counter.
Just, I'm not sure if you guys can hear me, but I can barely hear you, Mayor Baxter. And also, there is no video of the room there.
Okay, well, we're good. Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Bell. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act was passed by the US Congress on July 26, 1923, to ensure the civil rights of citizens with disabilities. And whereas the ADA prevents discrimination based on disability, requires that employers provide reasonable accommodations, ensures that public accommodations meet accessibility requirements, and is recognized as one of the most important civil rights of American history. Whereas the city of Durango is committed to honoring the small step forward by the employee and is dedicated to advancing initiatives to institute diversity, equality, and inclusion by creating a community where everyone has access and opportunity to seek achievement, prosperity, and fulfillment. Whereas school promise the ADA will only be achieved if the public entity remains within their efforts to implement the APA and educate itself. Whereas disability pride enables people with disabilities to redefine their identity with self-worth, serve tools for radicalism, bias, and discrimination, and reshape false negative perceptions of individuals with disabilities as people with value, talents, and significance. And whereas despite changes provided for people with disabilities, there is still need for greater opportunities and opportunities for greater participation in American life. Now that Mayor Kim Baxter, Mayor Durango, Colorado, do hereby decree in July 21 as disability pride month, the Durango Call. Do you want to say something? You want to say something?
If that's hard to say, I'll tweet. First of all, I want to thank the city of Durango for recognizing July 21 as disability pride month. This is where I come from, 1994, and it's a city over our country. So I hope this is first for many, for Durango, and for other cities in our region, and all the cities in Colorado. Disability is a diverse community and used to work in many areas differently. Disability herself, who are not a community, might say that it's not a diagnosis. It's more, it's a community. It's connected culture, shared spaces, and unfortunately, a lot of people seem to have disability though. Durango is a huge tribe, and there's always the Americans with Disabilities Act, which was signed a long, 30 years ago. So that's longer than I know. It's been a long time, and it's a long way that people still are not familiar with. Durango has a very long way to go with fulfilling the 80-year worst of a lot of our country has a long way to go in fulfilling what the 80-year worst for people. So people, how you can help them. It don't hurt when someone with disability to support their community or possible. It shows all the people who are accessible, including businesses, and that disability can be improved by local businesses. It's one of the biggest signs that something that everyone here can ensure in their offices and in their life. And many places here are still not accessible. Plenty more of those buildings, for example, is very accessible. Most of the Durango city buildings are, but there are many businesses and other places in Durango that have yet to be accessible 31 years after the implementation. I'd like to recognize that we have a PSL interpreter on the meeting today, which helps citizens in present and future meetings. Having a PSL interpreter ensures that dumb and hardworking people can stand on some personal meetings and hear the same information that all this year is today. I also have information about pandemic, the effects on our community. The pandemic has had a hit, I've recently said. It's had an impact on people with disabilities and those main institutions that they're serving. That's something that many people forget about, and as we move towards the days of this pandemic, as more people reopen and as people get off their grubs, rejoin, doing things they're doing, we can't rebuild these disabilities that were able to implement or implement such as higher needs. So people, one, working, working from home, the other, from home, that are people to the population in the whole, that we may not be able to possible and that we can't move on and break them out. Thank you, Mayor Baxter, for writing this proclamation. It also makes sense to help to provide this information and working with me on creating self-respect community, something that serves the community. And thank you.
Thank you, everyone. This is one way to. Olivia, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. My computer just stopped working altogether.
Yeah, that's quite all right. We understand. We all have those issues. But you can hear us now?
I can hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Great. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to item six, review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the City Council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 8. Are there any consent agenda items that any councilors would like to remove?
I'd like to remove item 6.4.
6.4. That's the approval of the minutes June 15?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any others? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding item 6.4?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda excluding item 6.4.
I second.
Excellent. May we take a vote, Ms. Phillips?
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Bostman?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes.
So now we're on to item eight, which is the removed consent agenda. We didn't do anything. I'm sorry, Amy. Okay, we'll do that another day. And so it's item 6.4, approval of minutes, June 15 to 2020, City Council Regular Meeting. Councilor Bostman, your comments? We can't hear you either on mute, I believe.
I don't, I'm not familiar with the minutes, but I wasn't present, and I think there's only two people present during this meeting that were present, and therefore, I'm not sure if that can be part of the consent agenda.
We can discontinue the approval of those until a future meeting. That's fine.
Okay, so just this one, and 6.4 will move on to our next meeting? Thank you, Olivia. Appreciate it. All right, move on to item nine, public hearings. And 9.1, we don't, oh, 9.1, legislative and policy related terms. 9.1. Public hearing, consider an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 2-16 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango, changing the starting time for City Council meetings from 6:30 p.m. to 5:30 p.m.
Yes, Mayor, this item came up at the Council's recent retreat and at the suggestion of staff. In consent of the Council, the study sessions and the Council meetings are going to be set on the same Tuesdays, the first and third Tuesdays of the month. So in order to make that schedule fit better, the, this item changes the regular meeting time for those Council meetings from 6:30 to 5:30 p.m. Otherwise, the meeting schedule will remain unchanged in terms of City Council meetings. And you'll note that we have a first reading of this item later in the agenda. A little unusual to do that, but we're trying to get that enforced prior to the first meeting in August.
And Dirk, if I may add, the other stipulation with this is that the public hearing section of the agenda would not begin any earlier than 6:30. So that would still stay 6:30 for the public hearing sides. Any item that has a public hearing would not start any earlier than 6:30.
Any discussion, councilors?
This is actually the hearing portion, so.
Oh, I have to open the public hearing? I don't have my public hearing. Amy, I don't have my public hearing, so I'm sorry.
You're looking for this square here? I think you can just open the public hearing on this question.
All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any comments? How would we know if we had public comment?
I assume they will tell us.
Tom, do you see anybody in the?
Sorry, Mayor, there is no one with a comment for this public hearing.
All right, thank you very much. I'm gonna close the, actually, then it's Council Discussion? No poll of A and N from you either? Yep, okay. Then I'll close the public hearing, and then we need to take a vote, correct?
Yes, and the motion is actually to, well, the normal procedure would be to instruct the drafting with an ordinance. The ordinance is already drafted, so the recommendation is to have a first reading of that ordinance later in the agenda.
And you can just so move. Okay, so move. Is there a second? You're on mute.
My second.
Wonderful. Any further discussion? May we have a roll call, please, or a vote, please, Ms. Phillips?
Councilor Bostman?
Yes.
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes, thank you. Onward to 11, introduction of ordinances, 11.1. An ordinance granting an easement over a portion of city-owned property to fast-track communications to service Manassut Kitchen and Elevita Court and declaring an effective date.
Yes, this is ordinance O2021-16. This is a ordinance to grant an easement to install fiber optics, as you said, to serve those portions of the city. So it's ready for motion.
Do we, this is not a public hearing?
No, we had a public hearing on this three weeks ago, yeah.
All right, so we need a motion, please.
I move to proceed with this project.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Councilor Bostman?
Yes.
Mayor Beck?
Yes. On to 11.2. An ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 2-16 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango, changing the starting time for City Council meetings from 6:30 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. and declaring an effective date.
Yes, this is just following the hearing we just conducted. So the motion, excuse me, the ordinance, again, O2021-17, has been drafted and before Council to change the meeting times, the regular meeting times for regular Council meetings from 6:30 to 5:30 p.m. Again, with the stipulation that no public hearing will commence any earlier than 6:30 p.m.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance O2021-17.
My second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Vote, please, Ms. Phillips.
Councilor Bostman?
Yes.
Councilor Buell?
Yes.
Mayor Baxter?
Yes.
Thank you. On to 12.1, city update.
Yes, Mayor and Council, just a brief update for those that did not watch the study session earlier. Just want to let the citizens know and congratulate our two newest directors, the first one being Turi Nycom coming to us from the city of Fruta. Served there as the Parks and Recreation Director for 14 years, has over 20 years of experience as a, in the Parks and Recreation field. So we're very excited to welcome Turi to the staff. And secondly, a congratulations to Sarah. Sarah Hill will be our new Transportation Director. Sarah has been with the organization for nine years. We really appreciate the hard work that she's done, and she's actually been acting for a bit also in this role. So she has really good experience here with it, and it's always good to see somebody progress through the organization. So congratulations, Sarah, as she will be our new Transportation Director.
Thank you very much. Do you have other things?
That's all.
That's it? All right. All right, so on to Council Reports and Actions. When we do our reports and actions, if you have an advisory board meeting that you've attended as liaison that's listed here, or others that aren't, please include those. Do we have any reports and actions?
Yeah, I can start. We had an Airport Commission meeting on June 17. May 2021 passenger traffic was at 97% of 2019 levels, so that's exciting. Using TSA screening numbers, the recovery seen through May at DRO is outpacing nationwide passenger recovery by approximately 45%. The runway rehabilitation project is in project design right now and tentatively planned for 2022. And that was like the main key things there. The Creative Economy Commission meeting was on June 29. We got a Durango art grade update. It's been a great and successful avenue for emerging artists, high schoolers, college students, and it's building a lot of momentum right now. The Animus City Night Bazaar started up on North Main area last Friday night. I didn't write the date down. I forgot when it was, but Thursday, there it was. The Durango Art Market starts on July 11, and that's at 11th Street on Sundays in the morning. And then we got an update on the Common Threads project.
One on Main?
The Camino, the panels, yep. And so the artist spoke at the meeting there and really advocated for their intention being that the art was placed where it was intended and where it was designed. And there was a lot of donated stuff that happened because of the location of it. We will be getting a request, I think, coming up from the Creative Economy Commission because we don't have enough money to, in the grant, to do the installation. And so Council will see a request for additional funds to get that project hopefully where it was intended. But I think that there's also going to be some alternates if we so desire, so. Yeah, there we go. That's it. That's it.
Councilor Bostman, do you have any reports and actions or liaison reports?
Well, I have one update on the multimodal board from June 16, and then I would like to bring another topic up that wasn't on the agenda, and I'll do that after everybody has covered their liaison reports. I was not present during the meeting. I have received the data, and I actually listened to the meeting itself. So I can just give you a brief update on that. The main topic was the capital improvements and the updates for the next five years. The, they use the capital improvement evaluation criteria that are updated as well. The key comments that were in addition to the existing ones are the Durango Mesa Park connectivity all the way to Aitton College. And that was added, and you will see this when it gets finalized. But, and then on the Highway West, there was a discussion on better connectivity, including snow removal. That was a bit borderline topic. And then, of course, the downtown area and the bumpouts. And Russia keeping that moving forward because it falls out of the five-year plan currently. So that will be on there as well. Then there was an option to combine the 250, 251 road with the 32nd Street traffic calming. There was also mention of the e-bikes. So it was mostly the capital improvement projects. Great news was that Durango has renewed as a goal designated by community. So that's another little chip on the shoulders for everybody in our community. And then the capacity was transit was another topic, still restricted based on the CDP HE. Let's see, there is, that's about it that I have. The other topic I'll bring up after you guys are done.
Okay, thank you. So the one thing I wanted to let Council know about was I attended the Regional Housing Authority Retreat on last Monday and Tuesday. And the board decided that they were very interested in seeing what, how we could reconstitute the RHA if it was capable of actually getting housing built. So we had, that's what we're exploring right now, is what are the options there? And any, we're working on redoing the intergovernmental agreement between the county and the other two, Bayfield and Ignacio. That'll come back to Council for approval for our inclusion if we so choose to do so. As well as, we're concurrently working on an RFP for an organization or a person to be the interim executive director for the RHA, which that also would come to Council for approval also. But that's where we are, so we're moving at this point. The board feels that there's a real opportunity here for the RHA to contribute to creating workforce housing in our communities and in our county. So you'll be hearing more. And that's all I have. So, Councilor Bostman, what was your topic?
The topic I'd like to discuss, what, that wasn't on the agenda, but it is the four items identified by the Council during the retreat. Now, it's not my intention to have a lengthy discussion on these topics, but merely a very brief update and just to see where we're going and where we can see the next step coming forward. And we discussed the meeting structure and format and schedule, and it seems we made progress on that, so that was discussed today as well. So I can assume we can revisit this in the future after those changes. We discussed water capabilities. That was the second topic on the retreat. And that's an active and ongoing process, so that will automatically come up in the near future. And we discussed the bigger vision for Durango. And I think that's especially important now as I believe the RFP for Camino del Rio Underpass went out. And I've gotten quite some feedback and concerns from our community on what actually is planned and how that fits into the whole area and vision between downtown and the river. Maybe the city manager can provide a brief update on what has been done and what the schedule is, just very briefly. That is what, bigger role, there's the bigger long-term vision. My dog is playing with me next to me. So if it's a connected pedestrian area from downtown to the river or two very separate areas divided by the highway, how that comes into play? Is it one underpass or two underpasses? A long-term vision for underground highway, reduce speed on Camino, et cetera. So hopefully, Jose can provide some information on that when I'm done with this list here. And the last, and certainly a very important one, was the workforce attainable housing. We had agreed on a two-tiered approach to gather more housing data and to identify funding mechanisms. So let me straight away update the housing data item. Sorry for the, the dog is playing around here. A list was sent that was reduced to the bare bones, and the city staff will be updating that sheet in the very near future. So that was to reduce staff time on this data gathering topic. The other item was the funding mechanisms, and some councilors mentioned before that they preferred any funds from 20 to 200 million. And other mentioned that it would be difficult to put a number on this without knowing what the actual projects and expenses would be. Now, the city is not a builder, but some items, for example, infrastructure improvements can be quite costly. So since housing is important to all councilors, and there is a variety of ways, such as the land use and development code changes being proactive and clear and consistent with contractors, using city land, using city land or acquiring land for development, infrastructure improvement, and as some have even mentioned, maybe even considering hiring a housing specialist externally or internally. It would be good to hear an update on this second tier, being the funding mechanisms. And I think Mayor Kim and Council Buell, you guys were taking the lead on that. We don't have to have all details, just see where you are and when we can get a more detailed update, or maybe it should be on the agenda in the future.
Thank you very much. So the first two items, we, as you self-identified, they're being taken care of and did.
Absolutely. I was looking just to make sure. And then on our work session for the 20th, we have a strategic plan update, which was also going to include some of the takeaways of what we've been doing that's within the identified work plan from the Council, and then also address some of these new items that have come up through the retreat and talk about where should we place those and what are the updates that we have on those items. So we do have an item for that for the 20th of July, which is our next meeting, to have a more in-depth conversation on these topics, as well as where we are and our status and our strategic plan. our status and our strategic plan.
That's the big vision, is that correct?
The strategic plan is not the big vision, strategic plan is actually the work plan for the year, so we're actually going to talk about when that was adopted in March, the progress we've made on each one of those for the year, uh, so far. So it's a little bit more than a quarter, probably about a five-month update on, but part of that also will then be talking about some of the things that we talked about in the retreat, which also are still tied into that strategic plan and have updates to where we are on some of those places on the retreat and gain some clarity of where the council is, uh, on some of those initiatives.
Help me out because one of the topics was specifically the bigger vision, so that all the little projects that are being done, uh, fit into that big vision and some of them, uh, could change, like the Camino underpass, if there's one underpass, uh, or is it a big one or small one, is it two or what is the, the bigger vision? And I think that's where we were.
So Olivier, I know that we discussed the concept of a bigger vision during the retreat, but council did not come to a design of that bigger vision. So.
To get to that point, where are we? Is that, is that part?
Uh, we did not, just, that was not something that we were moving forward on, I don't believe.
I, I thought that was one of the.
The bigger definition of, of the vision.
Well, if we do projects like the Camino underpass, and, uh, I think the, the design was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the actual underpass is expected to be over four million dollars, I think. It would be good to have some sort of assurance that it fits in the bigger vision because if we reduce the speed on the Camino de Rio, it might not be necessary to have an underpass or if you have only one underpass, it probably should be a very larger and I.
I, I hear what you're saying and I, I would like to say that previous councils, um, have moved in that direction of doing an undercross. And so what's being initiated now is what previous councils approved and put in a budget for the year of twenty twenty-one. So we are following that budget, which includes doing the study and design, I believe, also engineering for two options for that underpass. When that comes back to council, then all these other conversations can be had around that.
Well, that brings me back to the retreat, the basis of this, uh, topic. And what happened to the vision of the, the bigger vision, the long-term vision that was the, the to, the topic of discussion? It was just nice to hear, but we just skip on that element? I, I, I'm a bit confused.
Well, it, we can always have that conversation again if you'd like to, um, when we have our study sessions, that we do our future agendas and topic items, bring it up and see if you have council agreement to put it on another meeting and then we can go forward with that.
Well, we, we had it, I had mentioned it before and it was pushed to a retreat.
Yes, I understand. You mentioned it, you mentioned it before. Council as a whole did not make a decision to do anything specific about that. If you would like to do that, please bring it up in a study session and request it as a future agenda item and then council will decide if they want it as a future agenda item.
I, I will, I will listen to the, said, uh, the retreat me, meeting, uh, once more just to make sure that we have that same, uh, opinion because we have all these projects and they take place and they, they will define. If you make a, a big structure right next to Camino de Rio, then you have eliminated the option for something else in that place. And I just hear a lot of our community speak out again, uh, with questions, not, not against it, just with questions about it, so we can, we can.
So, so if you wanted, if you'd like to discuss this in the future, please bring it up in a study session under the topic of future agenda topics and council will choose if we want to have that discussion or not.
I think what's important, like all these little projects that we're talking about, they've all been approved by pri, prior councils, right? And so they talked about it, they got information on it and we decided to go through in the budget and so now we're following through with that, but it'll come back to us and we'll get to like make final decisions, um, based on our vision for Durango and what we can agree on.
And there will be plenty of time to discuss whether or not an underpass with, when we have the documentation and the information about it, fits in with a vision. And there's time to discuss a vision, too.
I, I appreciate your feedback. I, I always try to be efficient in spending money on studies and designs and prevent certain things not from happening, but, uh, we can, we can, uh, we do the circle backwards. It's okay, it's not a problem. I'll, I'll try and bring it up during the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Actually, I, I'll bring it up at the end of this meeting, if, if there's an option to add as an agenda item, the bigger vision discussion.
Sure, you can, you can request that right now, but I personally would prefer to have the entire council here for that discussion, but if you want to bring that up and do that.
Just to put it on the agenda.
So which agenda, which, which agenda, which study session would you like to put up?
Uh, the first one coming up, if, if that's possible and otherwise the next one.
Okay, um, so I personally am not in favor of that unless we have the full city council here to discuss it, so it's what's your thought?
I agree, yeah.
Okay, so I, please wait for the full city council to be here to have that discussion. Thank you. I think it's important, so Olivier, I think it's important enough that these kind of decisions get made by all city councillors. We strive to have all five of us here as often as possible. This is our first meeting where we haven't been able to do that and I think that the topic that you're bringing up is, is very important and I really want us to have the full council here to address it. I think that's the only the fair thing to do.
No, I, I appreciate it and it's not about the discussion, it is about setting it on the agenda, but it's fine, I'll ask, I'll bring it up next then. And that leaves the last, uh, item of the two-tiered approach on housing. I think we need to really be active in that and I think you guys were both, uh.
Councillor, Councillor Buell and I have done a draft on that. I actually learned some more things that I would like to add to that draft from the RHA meeting of last Monday and Tuesday. And then we have been working with our city manager to find a time to put it on the agenda so we can bring it forward to council.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before we end the meeting? Thank you. Meeting adjourned.